It's five o'clock. I'll call the meeting on the Ramsey County Commission order. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to thank everybody in attendance, both in person and online. First item on our agenda today would be the approval of the minutes. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to approve the agenda as presented, as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First item up is Mrs. Kenner. I'd like access. Good afternoon.
Well, hello. Good afternoon. Just kidding. I used to have the Lake Access budget for summer and the year-round fish cleaning station in your packet. Not a whole lot has changed from this year compared to past. We are still asking for the same amount of income of eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars in total, fifteen thousand of that to come from the Ramsey County for their contribution. Game and fish income has increased slightly over the years to currently at forty-six thousand, which is nice to see. As far as our expenses go, we have been watching those closely and we are pretty much on par with those moving forward into next year's budget. The only thing that has changed slightly is the Ramsey water. We have increased that portion of it. We, as of next year, we will no longer be receiving the bigger discount that we've had in the past and that'll go up slightly. So I think it used to be roughly around fifteen hundred dollars and now we'll be at that four thousand dollar range. So all in all, we've got a net income sitting at about nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. I'll ask for any questions if you have any. Be happy to go over anything you need.
Anybody have any questions for Susie? I think everything looks good. Nothing? Okay. Appreciate you coming in, Susie.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks for putting me first.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good. How good.
Have a good night. Safe, Melody. Welcome.
Good afternoon. So I believe my request is in your packet as well. So I'd like to share a little bit with our statistics. So last year in twenty-twenty-three, we had served two-hundred-and-nineteen victims. Hundred-and-eighty were domestic violence, thirty-nine were sexual assault. This year so far from January to June, we've served three-hundred-and-eleven victims. We did seventeen forensic medical exams for the year. So far this year, we've done fifteen. Last year, twenty-nine families were placed in shelter with two-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five bed nights. This year, we have placed forty-one families in shelter with three-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-five bed nights. Safe has answered four-hundred-and-ninety-three crisis calls last year. This year, we're up to three-hundred-and-fifty-six already. And that was just the end of June. So as you can see, our numbers have increased considerably. We also, if you haven't heard, we acquired the Good Sam property. It was gifted for the purchase price of a dollar. And we're moving slowly, trying to get in there. We're painting. We have to do flooring before we can move in. But I do have a floor plan to share with all of you to show you what we plan to do with the campus and that other entities will be renting from us to help offset some of the costs. So if you want to take a look of this floor plan, I want to show that right here is going to be sheltered and there'll be twenty-four beds at least. And the rooms that have the little lines are going to have doors so that they can become family rooms. So if, say, a family of seven come in, they can use the two rooms as one room to live in. We're also expanding to allow women and children that are homeless to come in as well. So with that, we're expanding our services.
So all, I've been in this place, so all these rooms are getting bathrooms and stuff installed in them?
All the rooms, all the rooms have bathrooms in them already. We don't have to do any of that.
Showers, all that stuff, so how's that?
So the, there's, on the shelter side, there is two rooms with tub and shower. Well, two of them have shower capabilities. One only has a tub and they're going to have to work with using that bathroom, as is for showering. They'll have to do rotations on that, like with a set schedule for shelter. We couldn't afford a lot of the remodeling expenses at all, so we're trying to utilize as much as possible with the plans there. On the second page where you see the same program, we are putting a separate entry in there so that victims of sexual assault can come directly in the facility and not have to walk through the building to get there. We're also providing a daycare for the community along with the victims in the shelter, so. Spirit Lake Nation's victim assistance and First Nation Women's Alliance also would like to rent room, office space with us so that we can provide wraparound services and collaborate closely.
Is this going to be manned twenty-four hours?
Yes, it has to be due to the shelter. So security would be twenty-four-seven.
You were gifted the building.
For a dollar, for the purchase price of a dollar.
And do you have an estimate of the remodel cost?
Chris Dumond, who was working with construction here, is trying to get that for us.
Okay.
We don't have that yet.
Has any work begun on the facility yet or?
Just painting.
Just painting?
Yeah. The carpet is going to cost around fifteen thousand for us to do the work ourselves. Otherwise, Lamont's and Thompson's quoted us over six-hundred thousand. Yeah, so we're trying to do things as cheap as possible and yet still nice and secure. We have worked with Homeland Security and come in and do an audit. We're working with Electro Watch for all the security cameras and all of the door locks and whatnot.
So does this facility fall in with like the fire code?
Yes. Everything will be, yes. Right now, it's still, it's up to fire code right now. The sprinkler system is up to code. The smoke alarm, it's all being monitored currently with Summit Protection.
Where, what are your other funding sources?
So we have state and federal grants. Our federal grants are being forty percent cut this year.
Cut forty percent?
Yes.
So with those being cut, how do you? Just, you were talking to other people renting? That's how you're going to offset the costs?
Well, we're hoping that'll help with some of the offset, but writing other grants and doing a capital campaign for fundraising. And then I did send a letter regarding the recovery funds. I didn't realize when I went on the site, it said zero dollars for Ramsey County, so that's why I requested the amount I did until Candy had talked to me and said that those dollars may have already been spoken for.
Yes, they have.
So I guess I'm not seeing that much that you asked for.
We just asked for the same of the sixteen thousand, but if you're willing to give us more, we'll definitely be very appreciative for it. I do like to add a little something just for you guys to think about. If you would think of, if this was your mom, your sister, your aunt, your daughter, your granddaughter, I have something that was written by a victim. She was sixteen years old when this happened to her and I would like to share this with you guys so that you can give a perspective of the services that we provide and how we help individuals. So she wrote, "Why didn't he listen to me? I told him, 'No. Really? Why me? Why did he hurt me? Was I not good enough? Why did he cheat? What did I do wrong? How did I mess up this time? Was it my fault? Was I too weak? I tried pushing him off and telling him no, but it didn't work. I hate thinking about it. It makes me feel like I'm reliving it. He kept touching me and made me feel uncomfortable. I told him to stop. He always made me the bad guy. If I didn't want to do something, he'd get mad. He made me touch his you-know-what. My heart rate is at a hundred-and-twenty riding this. Help me."
Thank you for sharing. Any questions for Melody? There are none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thanks, thanks.
Lake Region Heritage Center, Lisi Crosby, welcome.
Good afternoon. So I am here just requesting the same as I did last year. And Candy was kind enough to get me that number and my page, my numbers are so tiny, tiny on this document that I have to use my readers on my own document. So it looks like the county mill levies would be, for this coming year, would be eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two. And this year, we've had a relatively quiet year with the Heritage Center building maintenance. The boiler didn't go crazy and without even having to do the major roof repair, it didn't do anything crazy for us. It has remained stable. And the rest of the building has been doing as fair as can be. I mean, we are looking at other things that need to be done, but the roof is still the number one concern and right now it is doing okay. We did get new cameras, so that was a great upgrade for our security because they were not doing so hot. And our, now we have circumference of the entire outside of our building also, which we didn't have before. The building, it's, I mean, public-wise, we've been very busy this year, this summer. Well, even in the winter, we had pretty good foot traffic, but this summer we had, we've really had a lot of public foot traffic. Today, I bet we had, well, I wasn't there the whole day. I was gone for lunch, but when I was there, we had twenty-two people come through the door. And that's a lot of people. I mean, when you're trying to get things done on the computer, it doesn't work very well because I do feel the need to visit with people when they come in the door, so. Anyway, we've had graduations, renting the building, the main space, our gala. We had a great gala. We had, we have the Scouts there once a week. We have American Legion. They also replaced our back door for handicap accessibility. The pushbars weren't working and then also for fire code, we had a pushbar installed. We've had some good things happen this year. I can't think. Bill, do you have anything that you can add? And the Arts Center, huge, been taking up a lot of my time, huge amount of my time, but I think that that also has added to our foot traffic because we obviously tell each other, go from one place to the other. Right now, we have some things on, from the Heritage Center at the Arts Center and it looks so different in that space than it does in the Heritage Center, so please go on down and look at that. I don't have that on the budget. It's the first year and I am, I'm not seeing a huge difference in numbers for that. You know, the rent is paid a hundred percent by the city for that. Utilities, they are paying a large portion of it and it looks like with our Art Fest revenue, it's going to pay the rest of it for this year. And we'll see coming up what that'll be, but.
That's great.
Yeah, it's, it's been great. It's a lot of work, but I think it'll, so far, it's been really a good addition and I'm willing to work at it, so.
Good, good, good. Any questions for Lisa? Bill, you sit on that board. Anything you'd like to add?
That Lisa does a really good job of running and the addition of the Arts Center was a pretty nice addition.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Come in anytime. Look around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Extension, are they coming down? Cindy, Jeff, we're ready for you in the commission room. All right, thank you. Yeah. I bet Bill wouldn't know that.
I'm with three of them.
Yeah. Candy, can you use this number? Eight-nine-five-nine-nine-five?
Fifty-nine-nine-nine.
Hey, Sarah.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi. Yeah.
We are on the Extension Service budget. Anything that you'd like to point out, anything out of the ordinary?
Um, you know, just the, our, the Extension agent's salaries, just, just as a reminder, our, is a partnership between NDSU and the county, fifty-fifty. Both Lindsay and I will be set to have a, some merit increases. They're still doing some equity pay with some of us that are, that have spent quite a bit of, quite a few years in the organization, but the equity pay, that is paid by NDSU. It's just the merit increase. So, so what you see on our proposed budget is half of our salaries. And then the full-time secretary would be Cindy, part-time would be Tricia and proposed at twenty-one dollars an hour. I'm not sure if we have the fixed charges in there yet, Candy. Not yet, Kate? Yeah, and then as far as everything else, we pretty much.
So did you do your wages thing? Since they pay fifty percent, does that still go off of the, like the three percent and all that, or how does that work? We don't do any of that from there?
Exactly. It's what the state decides for us. Mm-hmm. Good question. Actually looked at what we've been using so far, went down on our office supplies and pretty much kept everything else the same. Anybody have any questions or?
Anybody have any questions for Sarah? Got to ask how the state fair turn out for you guys?
Well, it's busy. All the non-livestock events are finished. Static, static projects are still there. We got a lot of livestock shows left for those that are still there, but it's going to be some hot weather for some of our families, but otherwise, so far, so good. We had a lot of, a lot of participants in the clothing review, Project Expo and Communication Arts, so.
Lot of exhibits. Looked like the kids did a great job.
We had about three-hundred-and-twenty exhibits, so our exhibits are up this year. And we just thank our clubs for bringing the, everything there and back. It's a, not an easy task, but yeah.
Great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for Sarah? Any questions? Appreciate you coming in, Sarah.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioners, to speak into your microphones. Do we have anybody coming in for Lake Region Community Shelter? Brenda's coming in or? Okay.
Yes. Jeff, could we just move on to veterans?
Yep.
Welcome, Bryce. Veteran service. I got the data from the state. Book that I have. Going on and stuff with the, with the office and stuff, so. Yeah, it's pretty common information until you get to the, probably the twenty-twenty-three datas where the stuff starts to change on there. And then after that, I included some of the things that are more prominent that are coming up within the Veterans Services stuff within the area. So we're on par for a good year. I have the compensation pension benefits paid out, almost up to five million dollars coming in last year. Up to four million nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine seven thousand dollars or ninety-seven thousand. And this year for compensation and pension benefits, I'm already a hundred thousand dollars over last year. So for the whole year, at this point in July, I'm already, so we're going to, I'm sure we'll get five million pretty easily then. We're well up here on that stuff too, so. And then it kind of compares on the veteran side. One thing to note on there, we did have a reduction both on the education, vocational rehabilitation and then on some on medical. And I think some of that has to do with like with pensions and stuff. It's really hard to get. The income levels for qualification are so low that it's even hard for a veteran to qualify for those types of benefits because as soon as they pick up social security or something like that, it'll knock them off the, the price range for that, you know? Yeah, and for like widows, it's even worse. So if they're making a thousand dollars a month and they're not, you know, qualified for those benefits and who can live with an apartment rent or something like that for thirteen thousand dollars a year and stuff? So you see some reductions in that. And also some of the medical is going down, but we're seeing an increase in the medical stuff. But the VA is offering more stuff at home for veterans to do, like aid and attendance and people to come in for nursing homes. Well, the cost of that is substantially lower than it is for nursing homes. So I think that's why we're seeing a reduction and despite the numbers rising in compensation, my actual number of veterans that I'm servicing in Ramsey County actually dropped a little bit last year because the last of the world for two guys and stuff are falling away and that was a substantial portion of the veterans that are coming in and stuff too. I think we're picking up a lot more of the deployed National Guard side, so we might see a little bit raise coming up here too in the next ten years or so too. Once those Gulf War veterans start to hit around the sixty-five age range and stuff on there and stuff too. So on the general side, we had on there, you'll notice on the TARA Act, if you guys heard of the PACT Act, it allowed for presumptive claims and stuff for a lot of the veterans from Vietnam and the Gulf War to get that. Well, the TARA, which is this new toxic exposure, exposure risk activity on there, opened up the windows for compensation for veterans that are, regardless if they were overseas or what, if they got exposed to something, have that opportunity put in. Sometimes things like jet fuel for our Air Force guys, those types of things are very carcinogenic. Well, you know, if they weren't deployed over in the Gulf War Vietnam, a lot of times they didn't have the opportunity or the type of priority level that the VA gave to those types of folks. So those are getting in now too. So I'm seeing more claims coming in or a turnaround where they're, in the, in the past, they were denied, are now getting approved. And that can end up being a substantial back pay. If they had been denied something back in nineteen-eighty and the VA now recognizes, then they'll pack pay that back to nineteen-eighty, you know? So that's how you can get those huge back pay for compensation benefits. And I'm still not going to, I haven't beaten my one. It last, was it a year and a half ago, I had the guy from Benson County, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars in back payment, so. So that was pretty good. On there too, there's a proclamation, North Dakota came out here for the suicide prevention. It's basic awareness. That way, you'll see a lot of my literature and stuff I put on that nine-eight-eight number. So now veterans can call that instead of having that separate veterans crisis line. So there's an all-accomplishing Veterans Call number with that nine-eight-eight. And then for veterans specific, all they have to do is press one afterwards and then they can get someone that, you know. and then for veteran-specific, all they have to do is press one afterwards, and then they can get someone that, you know, is worked with veterans, or is a prior service veteran themselves and stuff on there. And then I'm working with some of the Veteran Service Organizations, North Dakota started naming, I think they did five bridges last year, and a highway for some of the veterans, so I think we might be looking at, uh, working with some of the like Legion and BFW, or possibly, you know, looking at some of the county, uh, county bridges and stuff, or named after bridges, and then the Veteran Service Organization would pay for like the signage and stuff like that, so the cost to the Department of Transportation or the county would be minimal. Um, and then I do have the state North Dakota Welcome Home Veterans Coins in the office, and those are, um, for any Vietnam-era veterans, so if they were in Germany providing services, support, or in Japan, doing that stuff, they're still eligible for the coins, and I have plenty of those in my office yet too, and if I can wait a week or two, I can generate a certificate for them. Um, also for Nelson County, we have the Veterans Treatment Court opened up. It's on a trial, uh, basis right now, so it's for Grand Forks and Nelson County veterans. I've had a few submitted in there, um, so if, if it turns out to be really good, then they'll expand that program, um, for the rest of the state. So what it is, so if we have a, uh, some, a veteran that's been, uh, convicted of a crime, and instead of going through their regular, uh, court route, they'll have, uh, 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 court in Grand Forks, and then the judge might, um, reduce her sentence, or temporarily, or, you know, cause if they, if they fail to meet the, um, the criteria for going through, through the VA treatment and stuff, for like alcohol or drugs or something, um, they can get a reduced sentence at times, um, for the veteran and stuff, and then if they fail to do it, they're back to where a normal sentence and stuff would be on there, so. Um, we also have, um, under the Veterans Benefit Administration, and this is pertains to me, uh, personally, because in September, I'm going to be doing the last of the accreditation process. I was kind of holding back on this one for the National Association, because it makes me accredited with the DAV, and once I become accredited with the DAV, they don't look at my stuff anymore, and I, I like to have a second eyes on the stuff I was sending out, but the DAV is a little bit different than that. So once I get accredited with them, I actually become a DAV Veteran Service Officer, and I work directly with them, and I don't, so I don't have someone looking at my stuff or making recommendations, and I get, at this point, it, it doesn't really matter much to me anymore, cause I don't hardly ever get anything back at all.
What's the benefit of?
Oh, see, yeah, so, because a veteran has a choice of what organization they want to represent them, whether it's the North Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs, American Legion, BFW, DAV, and vets, and stuff, and what they have personnel down in regional offices in Fargo that will review their casework after I send it in, and if they have to go in front of a, a board of hearing, in front of the judge, they'll represent them, so the veteran doesn't have to sit there by himself in front of a judge. Well, the DAV, um, I'm not accredited with, so I cannot get access to any of their stuff on the computer system on the VA side. So if I get someone coming in from the Legion, or BFW, or North Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs, I have access to all their stuff on this Veterans Benefit Management System through the VA, so I can see progression on what's going on with them, and, and certain things that, that help me assist the veteran.
That could speed up the process.
Yes, for those, yep, and make it a lot easier, so. Um, and that'll be my final accreditation and stuff on there and stuff too, and that's why I like the CAC card and stuff too, that's how I get access to all that stuff on there. Um, Veterans Health Administration, um, the clinic up at the hospital is now fully staffed, uh, for the first time too, they finally have got a phlebotomist working up there, Amy Cox, she's a nurse practitioner that's been walking, working up there, um, and they're getting a lot of clients, which is awesome. But the problem is they're running out of room to, to put all of the, the clients in where they're coming up, so the VA, uh, slotted Jamestown and Devil's Lake to get the new VA clinic in, in our, in Devil's Lake and Jamestown in twenty twenty-six. So they'll be looking at sites, I think they were looking at some of the stuff that was happening before, but it's all put on the kibosh. So what they're looking for is a bigger facility, and then something on the ground floor and stuff on there, so that'll be a, a, a good boon for Devil's Lake too, so. Right now, uh, the clinic, so we kind of play off each other, so sometimes they'll send, uh, clients from up there down to me, uh, for enrollments and stuff, or for assistance, and then subsequently, you know, I get them enrolled into the system, so they are able to use that, uh, facility, so. Um, and then on the National Cemetery Administration, um, we're seeing some things, some changes with like cremations and stuff, so the VA will now furnish things like a urn, or, 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 urn, uh, urn and stuff for the veterans that they can use, but that's in lieu of a headstone, so if they get an urn for cremations, then they cannot get a headstone and stuff. And I don't know if you're aware, but the North Dakota State Cemetery also has a, a new column burial, uh, in the state cemetery, where they can get their remains put on there too, if they're cremated and stuff too, and that, that's a kind of little neat addition, and they're expanding even more and more, as though when it, in man, ends increasing. And there's more facilities and, uh, stuff being put in at the Fargo Cemetery and stuff too, so that thing is also growing. Um, they also expanded some of the burial benefits, and this is good for like, now, uh, veterans can get some of the burial benefits if they're going to be interned in a tribal cemetery and stuff like that, and they increase the payments for non-service connected deaths, so if a veteran dies from something that's not service-connected, they're getting a little bit more money than for, the VA will pay for transportation costs, and then, uh, somewhat on the internment cost too, so there's actually two payments that get combined and stuff on there, so. And then finally, I just attached that last proclamation, cause I had a blank page, so. So, you see, uh, uh, getting, uh, back to my budget and stuff on there, um, basically I just do whatever, whatever one tells me what to do on here, so, um, I had on there, there, for the, the first thing on there was the salary, um, and then I got the sheet was the fifty-six four twenty-one, which was on the sheet, but I think there's some hiccups with that and stuff, and Brian knows a lot more about that stuff than I do on there, the breakdown then for, on, based on the fifty-six four twenty-one, because Ramsey County's at sixty percent, Benson's County is at twenty-two, and then Nelson's County at eighteen percent, so it'd be, uh, thirty-three eight fifty-two, uh, eighty-five for Ramsey County on that number, but that is subject to change. Uh, the fixed charges we had on there, um, uh, no change from that, uh, forty thousand, that's all the insurance stuff on there. Uh, the travel, no change from last year, the technology is a big change on there. Um, I really don't use the phone system anymore, everything goes through, uh, the computer system, which I like, because it gives me an opportunity so those people that are calling Ramsey County, I re- I can reach them in Minnewakken or Lakota, or wherever, which I really, really like, the stuff on there. Um, so that's increased with the, with the stuff like, um, some of the programs and stuff that I use, um, Microsoft Excel, Adobe, I need a little bit better thing because of all the files that I process and have to scan into the system and stuff on there, so there was an increase in the technology, but then subsequently, there's a small reduction also in the telephone and office supplies on there, because things are not, no longer going on the telephone, but towards the technology side, I didn't have any changes in, uh, miscellaneous, miscellaneous expenses and stuff, so. I don't, did you?
Yeah, how about if we have Brian come up and explain the Department of Labor's, uh, minimum requirements for wages? Looks like we.
So, um, Bryce is, um, considered an exempt employee, so he earns his salaries not hourly. Um, Department of Labor has changed the minimum threshold for that wage, uh, for that wage as far as a, a yearly wage. They have now increased that to fifty-eight six fifty-six. So, any exempt employee, in, really in any industry, if they are below that threshold, you would have to move that employee to an hourly employee, which can be done in his situ- in his situation, but now he would become eligible for overtime, and, um, in our discussion, there seems to be some opportunities that that happens, um, after hour calls, you're out at Camp Crafton, um, those types of things.
Sometimes I'll do like things out into, you know, briefings to either veteran service organizations. I usually do at least a couple of briefings at Camp Crafton every year for the different units and stuff out there. And I have, because of my new, uh, phone abilities with the computers and stuff too, uh, if I'm taking, I'll usually answer my phone twenty-four seven for any veterans. Sometimes we're in dire straits for funding and stuff too, and I would just hate to put it off, or in the AR team or the stuff if I don't have to, but, you know, that's totally, whatever you guys want to do.
This is the, the base then?
The, the fifty-eight, that's the new base, that, that's up sixty percent from the previous, um, base salary that the Department of Labor had. And this, uh, apparently gets, will get now reviewed every three years by the Department of Labor, and, you know, make, they'll make adjustments to that minimum threshold. Um, his position definitely, in my opinion, meets the testing requirements as an exempt employee. Um, so that isn't an issue in his classification, it's, um, do we want to put him at the minimum threshold, um, and, and pay him that, that wage, or he would now become an hourly employee, effective January first, if he stays with, uh, the staff.
So, the budget that you presented doesn't reflect that number?
It does.
Okay.
But we would, this extra two thousand would be split. According to the.
Yep.
My opinion, I don't think if you put him on hourly.
No.
If, if this is the base, and then asking for the base every three years, it would be real, that for the base would not exempt him from if there was like the three percent or whatever.
Correct, correct, we'd have to see, you know, it's hard, you know, it depends what administration is in the office too, I probably won't lie, you know, with that, you know, and how that is determined, so, but that is a few years down the road, of course.
So basically, we need a, a motion for, to move to this, Jeff?
I would think that would be appropriate at this time to move him up to that minimum threshold, and you know, cause it does work out to be what, about an eight percent?
Yeah, I think it was seven point nine something percent total increase from his current.
What do you guys think?
It does, it sounds like it would be a mess.
Mm-hmm.
To try and keep track of your hours outside of the normal. So, yeah, I don't see how it would be working very well.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we use the new base.
Okay.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and, uh, increase Bryce's base to the Department of Labor's minimum requirements. Further discussion?
And, and for the record, this would be January first, twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's when the changes need to happen.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Anything else, Bryce, for us?
Unless you guys have any questions and stuff for me too, so, uh, great numbers. Yeah, yeah, I'm really happy with our numbers from twenty twenty-three and stuff too, so. And I'm right on par too, to have a, a good year for twenty twenty-four already, so.
So if, I do have one other question, if you became that DAV, then you don't have to send anything through those other entities?
Uh, I don't have to for the other entities right now, um, but for the DAV I do, but I like to have second eyes on there, because usually, you know, within fifteen minutes or so, maybe in the office, they'll, they'll do my transfer from the system right to the VA.
Okay.
Um, but with that too, you know, if, if I do make a mistake, or I need that extra representation or opinions, it's nice. Yeah, sure, and stuff too, so, and I'll still have access to Matt Hare, he's a DAV representative on the other, and he's really knowledgeable, knowledgeable and stuff if I need that, but, you know, especially starting out, it was, it was nerve-wracking to, to even consider the possibilities of not having those second eyes on that, so. And that would be with the DAV, but I would still continue the business as normal through the other organizations and stuff, so. Just a little bit different.
At twenty twenty-six, when they're talking the new facility, do you think that's a pretty high percentage of that happening?
Well, based on the way, the, the way it's going up there with, with the clinic, they seem very positive about it, and then it also got mentioned too at my last Veteran Service, uh, Organization meeting when I was down there, so that was the second time I had heard about it, but it is the government, um, so.
I'm just thinking, I know the hospital thing, it can take a lot of pressure off of.
Correct.
Now.
Yeah, yep, and stuff too, so.
I mean, it'd be great for the community.
Yep, and they re- uh, they're, it's like last time I was, walked up there and stuff too, and it's like they were out of exam rooms and stuff, so, up there, which is kind of, you know, important for the number of clients and stuff, they're getting there and stuff. So, there always seems to be someone up there sitting in the waiting room too, it's a, the staff up there is awesome, dude, I can't not recognize.
So it'd be a brand-new facility, a new location?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have location?
I have not talked to him with them about that and stuff too, so, um, I guess next time I go down to Fargo and stuff, I can stop by the office and stuff, and see if I can get some more information and stuff too, so, see if it's, was on a certain appropriation bill and stuff too, so. Yeah, I've been, there's, right now, this, this last congressional year, there's a stuff I've been tracking, has been put on hold, it's like stuff I thought was going to be on the docket for July is being pushed and probably off, and some of those things, if it doesn't get a vote on there, you know, through Congress or whatever, it has to go back to the committee and start all over again, and some of them I was really, you know, they're on their third go-round, they have bipartisan support, but sometimes it has to do with budgeting and stuff, and how, you know, there's certain money have to be allocated and all this stuff too, but it's very frustrating. You know, you'll get buy-in from the, the, the state legislative folks in, in the Senate in Congo, yeah, we're all pro-veteran, but, you know, when it comes down to it, it's hard to get them as a group together and do this, so. If they really, really, really support a veterans bill, or any bill for that matter, they'll co-sponsor it and stuff too, so that's kind of a good indicator for me to look at, you know, whether they're actually gonna put an investment of their time into it, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Brenda? Welcome. Brenda Burks Road, Lake Region Community Shelter. Is that what we're discussing?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah. So I gave the numbers in our letter, so requesting the twenty-five thousand again this year, same as last year. It is busy, it is full almost every day.
Three hundred and twenty-eight non-duplicate guests in the past.
Mm-hmm. So, non-duplicated, some of them, of course, come back and stay.
Okay.
We have ages from eighteen, so this year we had a couple who actually were, have to be eighteen to stay there, they're no longer living with their families, but they were still in high school. So staff made sure, helped them with homework, got them up in the morning, made sure they got to school on time. So we've had that up in, I guess there's a lady who's there now, I think she's still there, and she's in her eighties, so. So we have quite a large age range too, going for for the single.
Anybody have any questions for Brenda? Really like the, uh, the fact that you guys do do breathalyzer and drug testing, it's fantastic.
Yes, and actually, we have such a good relationship with the police department too, that if staff calls them, if somebody does come in intoxicated and refusing to leave, the police are usually there within a couple of minutes, and, and they take them to their facility, so, yeah. So, very strict about that.
Good. All you have to be.
Well, it's safety too, it's safety for our staff and safety for the other guests who are there, so. Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Brenda? Appreciate you coming in.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your support, so.
Sandy's not here yet for North Central Planning. She has a pretty extensive report in the packet for North Central.
So, when they have this in here, like this middle thing, this is something that falls under Sentry Code? So when they have this in here, like this middle thing, this is something that falls under sentry code now?
Hey Sandy. Hey, you are next on our list, so. And just to hear about schedule, so welcome.
I'm glad I came early then.
Well, we have your sheets up in front of us. Oh. Your request in a half a mil to be used to federal, to match federal funds. Is that?
That's correct, that's generally uh what we request uh from each of our six counties. Uh Ramsey County has been a little different since they have allowed us the space in the armory. That ha- that half mil request has been broken into two parts. One has been the the cash, the or the quarter mil, and then the other we valued for in kind. For our E D A partnership planning grant. We received um a three-year award through E D A. Uh, and that's where our comprehensive economic development strategy comes from and. Um, our economic development activities, and we use that, we have used that as match. What we're looking at is moving our offices out of the armory. Um, to the Holiday Mall, so then for next year, we would not have that in kind, so we would still be requesting the half mil.
And that's what you requested before too, right?
It was, correct, yep. It's been that way since um I took over in twenty thirteen.
A- a- and the moves are for sure thing?
The board did approve it.
Okay.
Yep.
So you believe in our facility?
Um, maybe by the end of September, if.
Wow.
Everything aligns.
Okay.
What is a half mil?
Thirty some thousand.
Sorry, Kennedy.
Uh, the quarter last year was eighteen thousand seventy seven dollars. That's the. The allocation for this year.
Yeah.
When you're talking quarter?
Mm hmm.
But we do eighteen thousand, we do thirty six.
Thirty six.
We did the eighteen this year. Be thirty six next. They valued the office at eighteen.
I'm sure, I track.
And that was something that Rick had set up with um previous commission, it's been that way a long time and that, so then we. Um, just valued that other quarter mil as in kind.
Right.
And E D A allowed that. So that we didn't have to have extra cash match for that.
Looks uh from your report, you guys have been busy.
We have our foot in a lot of different areas, yep.
To say it mildly, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, thank, yeah, thank you for everything you guys do over there.
And you're the one that's doing. Animal.
The livestock, yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions for Sandy? Any questions for us, Sandy?
Yep.
The the move is just need a larger facility?
We don't necessarily need larger, uh, we do more on Zoom now and have. Um, if you have been in the offices, the walls are partial walls and they're um, it's not insulated. Uh, so we have a lot of noise and actually with our Small Business Development Center. Is supposed to have a um confidential, secure place to meet with clients, and it just ends up being. Where she's meeting with them up in the front area of the offices and then people are walking in. So we just need something that's a little bit more um confidential.
Anything else for Sandy? Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks.
Now we get the big one. Yeah, I need to budget.
What page is that?
Um, nope. Good, we'll just start on page one.
That's why it's not part.
I tried them all down so make sure I never forget a page, so. Um, page one is the commissioner's budget. Um. The salaries, I put the um three percent. Um, travel. There doesn't really seem to be a whole lot of travel other than the um October conference. Um, and maybe here or there, one or one or two, so um I cut that um in half. Um. Technology went up. Um. Per Steve's. Um, like to cover the laptops and things like that, so I made that adjustment. Um. Dues and registration, um, we always seem to be budgeting a little bit. Almost. Almost double of what we needed, so um I scaled back on that. Um. The capital outlay, um, I left that two thousand dollars um. In case um. Anything with the with the laptops or, you know, wanting to purchase. Some additional technology for for you guys, um. So I left, I just left that the same. Uh, on to page two. Um. I. Fo- uh. I. Followed. The information from the Association of Counties. Um, as far as. Um, we don't, we no longer need to budget for like Guardian, Guardian and Lettum. Um, that is a state. I don't remember what page it's on. Um. That's, that's like a state funded. Thing, so it's. It's doesn't fall back on the county, um, and as you can see, you know. We haven't used anything out of there in the last two years anyway, so. Um, I just. Did away with it. Um, jury and witness fees, um, I reduced that by half. Um. The um public administrator attendant care. Um. In visiting with Rhonda today, um, I think I have to go back and I have to review this because. We we no longer have attended care. Um, but I know that um we received a contract. Um, for juvenile services in Grand Forks, and there's like a. Retention, like retention payments to to keep a spot.
We have to pay regardless of what.
Right, right, so.
Or you lose a spot.
Yeah, so. I don't, I have to look at that, I have to get with Brian again because, you know, him and I were kind of looking over that document and. Um, I don't. Know what the figure. Couldn't get that in depth, um, so I need to um take a look at that one again. Uh. But yeah, so that's for that page. Um. Number four. Is my office's budget.
You're not gonna need more than two thousand dollars with the election? For that part-time, isn't that what that's for?
Um. We've we've always left a part-time salary. As a crutch in there in case we did need.
Okay.
Someone during. An election year.
That's gonna be enough. That's what.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, I. I've pulled my resources from, I mean, Brian helps, Jackie helps.
Okay.
I mean, we.
I just wanna make sure that you budgeted enough.
Yeah, yeah, um. I did put, um.
Well, next year is not a.
Right, right. Um, and as you can see, you know, in the years past that we haven't, we've been able to get by. You know, without. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, I might need to pull a few people in this coming election, you know? Yeah. Um. I did put um with the recommendation of the board for wages. Um. A lot of things. Um. Lot of things are coming. Back. To the county. A lot of work. From the state. Um, is is falling back in our laps. To do. Um. I know that that doesn't affect everyone's office. But it does. It does affect. What goes on in, you know, in my office, the treasurer's office. You know? I would like to see wages. Reviewed a little bit more because of, and I mean, it's, it's a state thing, I get it. But. Yeah. Seems like everything gets piled on us to do and they get pat on the back. You know, but. I'll just leave it at that.
I know, I know, uh, Lisa said the same thing, so.
Yeah. It's it's a lot with this. Five hundred dollar. Tax credit thing, I mean, we we were just discussing some of it with Steve before. He leaves and. You know, we we have right now, we have over two thousand parcels. That are gonna receive some type of credit.
Okay. But that doesn't come until it comes from the state, so you don't know anything else about it, except for the two thousand people or person signed up.
And if it, and if it goes anything like. If it goes anything like other things that we've had to deal with them. They. They put the eight ball way ahead. And. Are just making, making rules and regulations as they go about, or oh, okay, do it this way. No.
So they don't even have the plan for how.
Yeah, it's like the month of August, we we don't have time for. You guys to figure out how things should be done. You know? So we don't know. We don't know, I mean, we we're gonna talk about it again tomorrow, I mean, we don't know if we're gonna, you know, split it up amongst four of us. And we're gonna have to put them in manually. We, you know, because all they do is give you a text file with information and. Here, you you give this to your programmer or, you know, you you do whatever you need to do with it. You know, well, there's, there's time.
Becomes an unfunded mandate.
Right, well, there's, it means there's time and then there's cost with the programmer too, to make this adjustment. And. I mean, with us, you know, being in the process of switching things over.
They haven't got to that list yet?
We we got names, that's all we got, we don't have any dollar amounts.
You had to name before, cause you had to do a paper to to send them first place.
But we have no dollar amount.
So they haven't given you anything?
So if we had it, if we had it.
Cause they don't even know if they're gonna do it yet.
Well, if we had a dollar amount, we could, we could be ten steps ahead.
Well, isn't that just that five hundred dollar deal?
Yep. Yep. But some some people may not, may not receive the full. Five hundred dollars. It's up to five hundred dollars. So if some, well, I'll use this as an example, if someone has a home step credit. And they they get either fifty percent or a hundred percent. So if they get the fifty percent. And they only have. Um, we'll we'll just say like three hundred and twenty seven dollars or something. All they're gonna get is three hundred and twenty seven dollars, so it's not like a.
You can't make money.
Right. It, yeah, it's.
That would be just like a a veteran that's a hundred percent, and they get theirs papers, that they're not gonna give them back five hundred dollars.
No.
But those people also applied for it, for the fact is. They don't know if they're gonna stay at a hundred percent. Just because you're a hundred percent disabled doesn't mean that they don't change it next month, right?
Yeah. You know, and they have, they have sent letters to those people that have either been denied or, you know. But. I. It's just a. Two steps, five, two, five, I mean, it, it, yeah, so. You might just see me here a lot next month to try to figure it out and Steve is, you know, Steve's gonna help us, he's. He's just, he's not gonna leave us, so, I mean. He'll be there. Um, so my travel. Um. Travel was basically. It was, you know, when we would travel to Bismarck, I mean, we traveled a lot to Bismarck in years past for election things, um. Now everything is done on the computer through Teams, which is awesome because. It's recorded, you can, you know, do a little multitasking and, you know, don't have to travel there for a day's meeting or. An hour's meeting and you can still be here to do work, so. Um, I still did leave a little bit in there, um, you know, if they have. You know, any kind of training or, you know, stuff that that I feel that Leslie would, you know, need to. Need to go to, so. Um, my technology, um, I left. Um. And I followed, um, what we have for Steve's notes, um. Service contract, I don't know, I was always short, I don't know why, but, um, so I bumped that up. Um, office supplies, um. That's kind of. But I mean, we, you know. We buy as we need, we're creative with what we have and try to make the dollars stretch a little bit further, um. Capital outlay, um, I have left that at twenty five hundred dollars because. There always seems to be um somebody's computer somewhere. Um, in the building that didn't get budgeted for and. Um. I. Reaped the benefit of that, so I give my laptop and Steve orders me a newer and better version, so. I just left, I just left that where it was at. Uh. Miscellaneous, um. And dues, um, I left that at fifteen hundred. Um. I know that there's, you know, I think. I know that there's you know I think our I know that the auditor and Treasurers Association is now one and I don't know if our dues are gonna stay the same or if they're gonna um how we're gonna handle that so we just we left that hey the life insurance that is the twenty eight cents that we pay for every employee two hundred dollars seems to cover that um workers comp we are supposed to be getting a figure like in the next week or so um as far as where that sits so I just left that with no figure for right now um unemployment insurance um as you can see we've never had to use it so I just left the five hundred dollars where it's at um eleven A just be the next page the North Dakota Association dues um they did say in their um information that there was a three percent increase um and I always seem to budget um a little bit more so I dropped it back a couple thousand because uh page thirteen thirteen is the state fire and tornado I did get a letter and then it was also in that memo that there would be a the letter said twenty five the memo said twenty eight I went with twenty eight just as a as a safety the okay so the state fire in tornado is state fire and tornado is the buildings structures buildings and yes the buildings the li- the liability insurance is the vehicles and different things like that but the state fire and tornado that is what goes through um the North Dakota Insurance Reserve that's why it is just super reasonable like for what we have and what is covered um and that's that's I mean it it covers like um equipment breakdown wind hail sewer backup debris you know different different things like that and um she she comes every we're in an even year so it would be next year where she comes and they will do a walk-through of every building to see if things you know things to be need to be improved increased to things like that but um we do um we do pretty good all we have to do is email let her know what we're building what we're um that type of thing yep
this number correct me if I'm wrong so it was eighteen thousand last year
no we haven't paid it we just paid it for this year and it was twenty yeah yeah it was twenty three or twenty four thousand I should have wrote that number in but
but you see what I'm saying with the twenty eight percent
yeah I should have wrote that number in sorry about that it was like twenty
should be twenty three forty that makes sense just asking because the way it looks it was a fifty percent
um and the liability insurance is like I said that that's the vehicles different equipment I mean it's still still quite reasonable I think um if we turn the page to thirteen A would be the publishing and printing um this is where we would do um any type of job advertising this would is the minutes the bills that are published every month and not a whole lot else comes out of that line just that so um the next page is the North Dakota Water Users um that is the two hundred dollars that pay to them every year I'm not sure what that um the next page postage um I I left that at the forty two thousand because of the increase in postage we're going to the ship yep um the next page is thirteen D that's the copier um I did list all of the offices that are included in that ten thousand dollars so our office has one in the back the tax director has one um the recorders office well we call it the recorders office it's the one that is shared um with like VSO and um different the county agents office has one um the state's attorney's office has the copier and colored printer and scanner yep yep um just just last no just last year um we added the sheriff's department onto this so that the LEC wouldn't be charging us for and they can they do um scan email it's all set up it's it's slick um highway departments um I believe that they are the only one who has a or did we change that um I think they're the only ones who have a colored copier they're they're the only ones for maps and etcetera um it's all it's all through the same company ve- very good very good customer service there there won't be any um really any future competition because the two copier companies that always went head to head for bids has now merged together so yeah they're well they they do pretty they do pretty good for like they I mean they give us government rate they they do you know I mean they have the schools you know they have yeah they have quite a few businesses in town so yeah I yeah I like those guys um the next page is election we don't really unless something changes and we have to buy different different things in the off year I I didn't feel that we needed to budget five thousand so I reduced I just cut it in half um page seventeen is the mental health another knock on wood I mean it's it's yeah I mean I I took it down to ten thousand I mean we've only you know on average I mean we're you know it might be a little bit more this year but yeah you can explain a little bit
mental health proceedings they're confidential in nature so I can't really talk about who's in there what's in there but typically it's it's a two-pronged system we do the the first hearing here in Ramsey County and then because they have all the specialized knowledge and like the state hospital is in Jamestown we refer out the second hearing to Jamestown cause that's where they're doing everything so we paid at least in my experience we've been paying two attorneys we have one on contract to handle the local hearings and then there's one that provides the service in Jamestown and then he sends us a bill and I sign off on it their billing is pretty consistent it's pretty fair from what I can tell in the amount of effort that has to go into those we did kinda get a little bit of a curveball uh this last calendar year we had somebody that was a sexually dangerous individual which doesn't happen around here a lot but that's kind of a related to mental health we had to pay out uh some big bills out of that one but that was a very complicated case so unless that's coming around again I think ten thousand is more than enough
so is this to defend that person
to explain their rights uh they get a court-appointed attorney it's the attorney
you provide is something
yep separate other questions
um moving on the next page um coroner fees autopsies that's that's from the request of the um county coroner um I I just left it the same not really sure about that um the next page is audit fees um I left that at twenty thousand um I know that I have been in contact with them because no one called me like hey are we doing an audit this year or what are we doing and yeah it's might be another year where it's gonna one is gonna roll into the next because they are with all this um the ARPA money its audits are taking longer I told them to let me know you know like where things sit so I could you know share with you guys um and I haven't gotten a response back but um I know that they did know I was out on medical leave so I probably should just reach out to them and you know say hey I'm back you know would you decide so I'll follow up with them and then let you know where we're going with that one
like in twenty three then is that why is that why that one was so high
yeah it it's it took longer it's you know I mean they they tried to do the best you know and they're they're great to work with so I mean I I can't complain I mean it's you know once you know now that we've you know this year we have dipped into that two million dollars now we're there's another part to the audit that has to be done so you know twenty mi- twenty thousand might not cover it but yeah so I like I said I just I just left it because if I you know if I know more in the next you know before the next meeting I can you know hopefully get a ballpark figure if you know but um page eighteen C is the health dental envision insurance I am supposed to have something from lacrosse this week
have they given you any indication
um no no she has not yeah as and as soon as I get you know I can then we are going to eighteen this line item is the FICA the N B PERS um the employer portion um I left it blank because a decision needs to be made as far as the law enforcement part with the N B PERS um what decision the board will make about that into that can't remember
public safety it's a little different a little higher
so that you know something to think about and we can discuss at the next meeting and then if you turn the next page that's page nineteen I did not put a figure in for miscellaneous general as you can see listed below are additional items that are taken out of that fund so if any decisions are going to be made or if you want me to put those figures in as part of the preliminary so we can move forward and then discuss as we go along that's
what's the Dakota programs
that is the program that we currently have
paid to switch over
and we we won't be going live with they they recommend like once once you go live that you that you keep both running for at least two to three months um so I just had them do a nine months because there's two parts to it so one part is like the taxing portion that that um the treasurer's office and we would use and then the other portion of it is the payroll And things like that, and that will come. Um, like a month or two after. So I just asked that we get something for nine months, and I know that it increased. Supposed to cover so that we, you know. Yeah. The sixty thousand um for the planning and zoning, that was to cover the other half of. Or not the other half, the other portion of the um comprehensive plan that we're having. Um, cause it was a hundred. One oh one. Something, yeah. So I went a little bit over, I mean, I just. I like round numbers, so I just went sixty thousand. With that one. Um.
And they getting up all those ones at the bottom, the additional items, I think. Just a year under a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. You know, and there's other things that come out of. Miss, and you have to understand that, that looking at this page, it looks very deceiving. That, you know, oh my god, we s- we only budgeted this, but you know, we actually spent this. A lot of that has come back, so it looks like we overspent, but we didn't.
Bill somebody for delivering papers, that's, that's what this goes in.
That, that money would go back into that miscellaneous debt, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so like he, you know, for, you know. Like things out of his budget. Like, um, like the seatbelt, you know, different things, the different grant things and stuff like that, you know, like, we would pay. The um deputies, you know, we would pay them out of the overtime in his budget. But yet when we get reimbursed from whichever grants or program that they're doing at the time. That money comes back and it goes into the miscellaneous gen. So it's. It's kind of a.
Money, money, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then the last one that I have is the. Um, the next page is just the West Dyke O and M, and that's the bill that we get. I think part of it was laying. On your desk, like the bill that we got this quarter from the city for um. Our portion of the um. Lift station and things like that. So, that's where we bid, I budgeted um like sixty-five thousand. That's all.
That's it, Don?
That's it, that's all I have. Um, I know that there's one in here, I just pu- I put the blank page in here, um, there's one for like special assessments. And that was, I believe, like a couple of years ago, when we were like specially assessed for part of the. Um, sidewalk. There you go, yeah, um, but I haven't gotten anything, so I did not budget for anything. And I can double check on that, but I believe we would have already gotten. A note, like a notification letter. That, you know, we would be having to pay something, so.
Anybody, you have any questions for Candy regarding your budget? So I know we did talk. You actually have a reduction in your budget?
Yep. Yep.
Two and a half percent or something.
Yep, I tried to, I tried to take it down to, you know. Um, and of course, like, you know, where, where I took the deductions from, then the wages, so it kind of. You know.
Right.
It was like a two percent or, yeah, I think it came out to like two percent. And I looked at, you know. Right.
Right. Never the anticipation.
Right. Right. Yep.
Just so people realize that that was not the.
Yep. And I, and I did explain to everyone and told them that, you know, like, that, that's not where you, you know, you just. You need to take a look at your budget and if you can cut in other places, you know. Do so, and if you can't, you can't, it's just, I mean. You know, we, we, I mean, I think everyone does pretty. Pretty good with, you know, what's there and no one, you know, spends outside the means of. You know, their budget, but I mean, I know that, you know, occasionally things happen in you. You know, it's not something that you budget for, you know, but we, you know. The end of the day, we seem to make it work, so it's. It's all good.
Anything else for Candy? Appreciate that, Candy.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sorry for the, uh, you know. Half a, half a limb over there.
That's all right. So that would bring us up to the one item that we have under new business, uh, discussion on remnant defendants. And I'll let Bo take over on that.
Can do, um, thanks for squeezing me into the agenda. We have been getting some correspondence from some of the opioid lawsuits. The long and the short of it is. There are. There's a special administrator that basically is doing these class action lawsuits and looking through. All of the hundreds of thousands of claims, all the different subdivisions. Uh, it sounds. Like according to the email that we received, there's somebody, there's a company called Qualitist Pharmaceuticals Inc. Which is a, it's been categorized as a remnant defendant. What that basically means is it's a really, it's not worth our time to go after them. So the counsel that we retained recommended to just dismiss our complaint against them. It's not, the juice isn't worth the squeeze, is basically what the email says. If we wanna dismiss them, we don't have to take any further action, I don't have to notify them, but if we want to keep them. I, he needs to be notified before Monday, the twenty-ninth, and we have to give him. A list of reasons why they should continue to sue this person or this company.
And the, and the deadline was the reason why Bo uh asked to get this on the agenda for today. And um. I think we just got that late last week.
Correct.
When we got it and so timing being of the essence with this one. It fit right into the schedule for this special meeting and uh. And I think based on your recommendations and look at that over, I think doing nothing and letting, allowing it to be dropped. Would be probably the best move.
I, that is my recommendation, I just don't think this is worth our time to go after this person or this company. I'm saying person, but I mean company, and I don't think uh. Even if we did wanna go after them, I don't have a list of reasons why.
Right.
This person or this company needs to be sued, so I'd recommend that you all. Allow the court to dismiss. Qualitist Pharmaceuticals Inc. as a remnant defendant.
So moved.
Say.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and remove Qualitist Pharmaceuticals as a remnant defendant. On the opioid lawsuit, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Any announcements? Complete the budget. We'll be able to do that without having an additional special meeting. Fingers are crossed.
I hope so.
Tees are crossed. So, regular meeting on August sixth.
I do have an update. If you recall a while back, we got sued by an inmate and that's in federal court. And that's still been pending, um, we did get counsel appointed through. The Insurance Reserve Fund because this inmate sued like five or six different.
Individuals.
Individuals entities. The long and the short of it is, uh, the magistrate judge is recommending dismissal of that complaint. But she can't order the case dismissed, it's gotta go to Judge Welty in Fargo. Basically, her investigation, she determined that uh. This inmate did not exhaust administrative remedies. And he has the opportunity to, to contest the dismissal. But he has to do so before August sixth. I think realistically ninety-nine percent of these recommendations get dismissed by the judge, so. That's good news for us.
Good news.
It's kind of been a long time coming. Questions on that?
Oh. No other uh announcements, meaning adjourned?
Thank you all.